Okay, we'll call the meeting order. Judge here on.
Thank you, and thank you again for allowing me to attend this morning to present my budget hearing or hear my budget hearing. On the circuit court budget, it's been a while since I've looked at it, but I don't think there's really any significant or any changes to the prior budget. Do you have any questions about that budget? I'm going to try to answer them.
No, that was pretty straightforward as you said. I wouldn't be real surprised if there, if I remember.
While you're on that topic, I know that we were starting discussion about the Odyssey program and what the clerk needs to basically scan in or whatever. Would you want to kind of clarify what your, what the circuit court's needs are and what your needs are in that and so forth, if you would?
Yeah, well, the, now that Odyssey is in place, everything is e-filed and so all new filings are scanned in. So that's how new filings are handled. Now, there are cases that may have started, and the biggest example of that would be a divorce case that would have started before e-filing, before Odyssey. And then, let's say now somebody wants to modify custody of the children from that divorce, so they would file, and they'd have to e-file, even though the original case was paper filed, they have to e-file the change of custody modification request. So what we need is the old case from before Odyssey to be scanned in so that when we hear the new petition of change custody, we can see what the old decree said and everything else that had transpired throughout the case. And that's really all I need is if something new is filed in a case that had started pre- Odyssey, then I need that scanned in. And that's how it is, as far as I know, across the state. Now, with previous clerks, I know there were times when they're, they would have a slow day, what have you, and the clerk would have some of their staff scan in documents just as needed, and as more kind of as a retention thing. And it's my understanding now that Odyssey doesn't want you to do that, and I, because it's slowing down the system with additional users. There's a lot more users now than there were in previous administrations too, because now almost every county in the state is on, on the system. So, and I've talked to Henry again about that to make sure that we're all on the same page on that. And he doesn't need to scan in anything that has been filed pre-Odyssey unless something new is filed. So I think we're on the same page on that now.
But it's reasonable to expect then that should one of those situations come up and it's not there, that they have at least some reasonable amount of time to locate that document and get it put in there then, right?
Yeah, I mean, I've never known that to be an issue.
Well, I mean, it was one of the things that was talked about is that some of them are not filed appropriately.
They have trouble finding.
They have trouble finding.
They have trouble finding.
And slows down your, your, your office and your situation and what you're trying to do.
Yeah, I haven't seen that as being a serious ongoing problem.
Right.
As far as what, how it gets to me.
Right. Well, I just wanted to clarify exactly what your needs were because in our discussions at the budget, and I think maybe you watched it, like, it kind of appeared that we were having to scan, go way, way back to scan stuff in, which seemed...
Well, like I said, I think previous administrations were doing that, and it's not a bad idea, but now they've, Odyssey is saying it's slowing down the system, so I have a problem.
They don't want it to be.
I'm not doing it. In fact, I never was requiring anybody to do it anyway. The clerks were just doing it as a courtesy, basically, just in case it ever needed to be done, and for retention purposes.
Right, for retention purposes.
The only time it really needs to be done is if something new is filed.
Sure, sure. Go ahead, go ahead.
So the other thing is the budget for the public defender board. I wanted to go over that a little bit. I sent you a letter in, in June when I submitted the budget, around the time I submitted the budget, that kind of went through what we're facing. But I probably have talked about this a little bit before, or maybe not in a meeting, but with some of you individually. And this is not just Park County, but statewide. There are less local practitioners. It used to be each county had several attorneys, and you would see attorney offices surrounding the courthouse. And anymore in smaller communities, that's just no longer the case. There's just less attorneys in small communities to serve in a public defender type capacity. So we have fewer attorneys to choose from locally. So that's an issue. Actually, with our public defender program, we have two public defenders that are on contract that are over retirement age now, and they may retire anytime. And it's difficult to find someone locally to replace them. So a lot of times, we would have, when I say "we," actually, it's the public defender board has to search Vigo County, for instance, or surrounding communities to find somebody to replace someone that retires or leaves. And we're finding that we have to, we have to compete with other small counties that are facing the same situation we are. Their attorney population is aging, and they have fewer and fewer younger attorneys coming in to replace them. So it's a supply and demand situation. So what that leads to is less attorneys available and more demand for attorneys. So, for instance, Vigo County right now, we pay our contract attorneys 32, maybe, the state minimum is 32. We might pay 35 now, or something close to that, for a contract attorney. And that's just an independent contract attorney, so there's no benefits associated with that. And they would have to pay taxes out of that. Well, Vigo County, for instance, for the same type of caseload, would pay $54,000. And they get, they pay benefits as well. They pay health insurance for those folks. So that's, obviously, we're not going to win apples-to-apples comparison with them. So in order for us to compete, we're trying to find solutions. And one of the solutions that has come up is having a regional public defender board. It was just recently, within the last few years, the legislature made an amendment to the rules allowing for regional public defender boards. So actually, right now, as far as I know, well, I do know, there are no regional public defender boards in the state of Indiana right now. So this is kind of a new concept, particularly in the application of it. But right now, we're in talks with Fountain County and Vermaine County to join public defender boards and have a regional public defender boards with those three communities. We're all fairly close in population and demographics, so it would make sense. And all three communities face similar situations. Actually, Vermaine County is probably in a worse position than Park County as far as their need for public defenders. Fountain County, actually, for whatever reason, they happen to have some younger attorneys in their community, and so it's not quite as pressing for Fountain County. But we all kind of see the writing on the wall. And actually, I was just at a conference last week, and several other judges from surrounding or other counties throughout the state brought it up with me. What are you, what are you doing for public defenders? Because they are finding it almost impossible to find somebody to fill public defender positions. And they were talking about regionalizing their public defender programs before I even brought up the fact that I'd been talking about doing ours. So it's, it's a statewide problem. Derek Mason from the Indiana Public Defender Commission recently spoke, and Roy and Jim East, which I really appreciate them coming, who had a meeting in Vermaine County with all three counties, public officials, where Derek Mason from the Public Defender Commission spoke as well. And he would verify that it is a statewide problem and that it's, it's not going to get any easier. And eventually, something's going to have to change in the way that we get public defenders, and this is a possible solution. I've been actually working on it and looking into it for a couple of years. When I first started working on it, it was my hope that one of the primary benefits would be a reduction in costs. Unfortunately, that's not going to be the case. It would actually increase our costs. However, Derek would tell you from the Public Defender Commission viewpoint, we are a very bare bones public defender program, and so is Vermaine and Fountain. For instance, like Green County or Vigo County, they have investigators, they have support staff, they have a lot of folks supporting their public defenders, and we don't have any of that. So if we were running a public defender program, for instance, that would be competitive with the prosecutor's office, our budget would be much higher already. And so there's that. The, the big benefits of right now, having a regional public defender board would be having a separate entity to do the budgets, to keep track of the records. Right now, for instance, my staff has to do the quarterly reports. Just to kind of back up a second to kind of talk about the process in general, we are in part of the Public Defender Commission program. So all of our expenses associated with public defenders are reimbursed by the state at 40%. In order to meet and continue to get that reimbursement, we have to meet certain criteria. And the attorneys have a caseload maximum that they can each receive, so you can only give them so many cases. If you go over that, then you're in jeopardy of losing your funding. So we are part of that program. So in order to stay with that program and stay within their best practices, having a separate program would be something that would be beneficial with them. It would allow us to separate the circuit court from keeping track and hiring and firing public defenders, which we shouldn't be involved in that. I mean, it needs to be, part of the, the public defender board needs to do that. And right now, our public defender board, they're, they're great people, but we can't, we don't have any, any money to pay them, any kind of compensation. So they're just volunteers. So I can't ask them to do all the reports that are necessary to keep us in compliance with the Public Defender Commission. So having a regional board would allow us to do that, where all three counties could contribute to paying the, the public defender board some kind of stipend in ongoing educational, continuing education expenses and mileage. It'd also allow the public defender board to have some administrative staff to do the reports that the circuit courts in our three counties are currently doing. So it'd free up our staff to do court stuff instead of public defender board stuff. And if you think about it, I mean, as I said with the, my earlier comparison to the prosecutor's office, we shouldn't be, the court needs to be a neutral, disinterested third party and not be involved with hiring and firing the compensation for the attorneys on the defense side. I mean, we don't do it for the prosecutor's side. We shouldn't do it for the defense side. So we need to separate ourselves from that. And so far, the Public Defender Commission understands historically, small counties, that's the way it's been. So we're not being pushed too hard on it. But I see soon, they're going to be pushing that issue more and more and making us get out of it. And so we, as one county individually, would have to pay our own public defender board some kind of stipend and pay them for administrative staff ourselves. And so in the long run, it would probably save us money eventually for all three counties to, to go in on that. I don't know. I went through, I guess, the, the main points of why it would be beneficial to do this. There is a lot that goes into it. All three counties have to do the same thing I'm doing in talking to commissioners, council. Everybody needs to be on board. The attorneys that are involved in this, we want to make sure that we keep the current attorneys that are serving as public defenders and doing a good job, try to keep them on board. So we don't want to alienate them, trying to keep them happy, trying to keep you guys happy, the commissioners happy, and everything else. So it's, and the Public Defender Commission. And so this is all kind of a, it's a difficult ongoing process. And I'm not sure, initially, we were hoping to start in January of '22. I really don't think that that's feasible at this point, because we've been working on, in our local agreement, which would be passed by the commissioners, if the commissioners would be so inclined. I do have a rough draft of it, which I just received last week, and they have to make some revisions to it. Then I'll, I'll get to Mr. Sauer. But even if we pass that tomorrow, there would still be too much to do to start in January 1st. So it wouldn't be something that would be started right away. Hopefully, maybe by June of next year, possibly even, you know, March. We try to do it on a quarterly, to start a quarter, maybe June. So that's what we're looking at now. I don't know. Roy went to the meeting. Do you have anything you want to add?
Just, just a couple of things. As to the audience and the council, with interlocal agreement and a multi-county board, there will be a provider unit issue, probably well aware at this point, that's intended to be Vermaine. Is that correct, Judge?
Right.
Vermaine County would be the provider unit. And the intent at this point was, is that the chief public defender, which is something that didn't get mentioned in this, but you would have a chief public defender, and then the public defender attorneys, and that person as well, would feed into that chief defender, who would be the one who would manage the caseloads and the attorneys going to wherever they're going to represent, whomever they're representing, instead of the judges, our judge or the other two, appointing an attorney to represent a defendant. So this chief public defender would be housed in Newport. And that salary is mandated by statute to be equivalent to the judge and the prosecutor, correct?
That's correct.
Our portion of it, this is all subject to the interlocal, but our money would feed to Vermaine, who would then cover the expenses. The reimbursements would come back as, as designed, as he stated, the 40% reimbursements. I think it's important that this gets said. I, I give the judge and his peers in Vermaine and Fountain a lot of credit for thinking of a different way to handle this. I wrote down a couple of things from the last, from the meeting then and from the judge's talk this morning, that there's really two big issues here. It's, number one is that the public defender service. So, and when you start talking about try, or court, the court system in our country is designed to be, you know, to where the plaintiff and the defendant are arguing in front of an impartial judge, right? That's how it's set up to be. And if you can't afford, if you're the defendant, you cannot afford representation. You are required, our constitution requires that you will get, get provided legal service. Well, the way it's working right now is the judge and the defense are, or the defendant are attached at the hip. That's not the way it's supposed to work. But it's been done that way for years. It's the way it had to be. And the other thing is, as he so clearly stated in the beginning, is that we have so much trouble getting defenders. There has to be some other way to do this. You can think in your own mind how many attorneys there are in our county. There's not a lot, and it's not any different in Vermaine, particularly, and as he stated, Fountain's a little different. But I give these three judges and their public defender boards a tremendous amount of credit for looking at a better way to handle this problem, instead of just punting it down a road a little bit further. So with that, Judge, I, I commend you for what you, what you and your peers are trying to do.
So what have we done in the budget as far as...
At this point, the request that the judge submitted has been passed on and put in the adopted column.
Right. So what we're looking at is, if, I looked at all three budgets combined for the three counties total, would be somewhere around $635,000. Looking at the budget, which the Public Defender Commission helped put us, put together for what we need to get by, would be about $720,000, somewhere, somewhere above $700,000. So we're looking about a 15% increase for all three counties. So that's what...
Let me interrupt. The $635,000 number that you started with is the, is the sum of the three budgets for this year, 2021, not the request for '22.
Exactly, yeah, right. So we would need over $700,000 to have a regional public defender board.
Could you, it's in your letter, maybe somebody remembers. Could you talk about breakdown of what the expectation is, who shares what costs?
Well, yeah, even though the populations are somewhat similar, the caseload is not, and that's for a lot of reasons that I really don't, I mean, if you want me to, all I will, if you have questions about it. But right now, based on our caseloads, caseload allocations, Vermaine County would be responsible for 43% of the budget, Park County 34% of the budget, and Fountain County for 23% of the budget. And so that's how it would be starting out. And if, actually, the way, that also matches up with the $635,000, if you take each individual county's portion of that budget, it lines up with those numbers pretty closely. So Vermaine County right now pay, if we added our three budgets of $635,000 together right now, 43% of that would be Vermaine County, 34% would be Park, 23% would be Fountain. And that's aligns very closely with our attorney needs as well, from what the Public Defender Commission has, has told us. So, which brings me, I guess, to the next point, is every, the plan is right now, every two years, or every so often, probably two years, maybe every year, the public, the chief public defender and the public defender board would get together, look at the numbers from the prior year on the number of attorneys needed for each community, and on a percentage basis, determine what each community was need, how much was needed from that particular community. And we, so that number could, will be adjusted every one to two years based on the need of the county. And the current plan would be right now that, so the chief public defender would draft the budget, submit it to the regional public defender board, and then the, somebody from the regional public defender board would come to you and sit where I'm sitting, and submit, say, hey, this year, this is our percentage of the budget, this is how much is needed in total, this is our percentage, and we'd go from there. And if, at some point, we decide that we don't want, if we, if we join the program and then later decide we don't want to join the program, that was something that was brought up, and it was an excellent point at the meeting we had in Vermaine County, is the plan right now would be, basically, have to give a year, each county would have to give a one-year advance notice or a very large advance notice to give the other counties a chance to adjust. Because if one county leaves, it would really mess up the whole system, if they took their budget away from total budget.
Okay. Well, carry on. I mean, that sounds like, I echo Roy's comments, and I'm glad you're looking at some other alternatives and...
Right. And if you budget the money, and then Jim and the commissioners would have to approve it, so I would want you guys to be able to look at the interlocal agreement as well, and if you saw any problems with it. I mean, but I would at least like to have the money there in the event that we are able to reach some kind of...
Well, it's there. I mean, we've put it in exactly as you requested. So it'll be there in '22.
That's fantastic.
Then you'll have to work with the commissioners and whatever else. Your CASA director's here too. Did you want to say anything about CASA or...
Well, we have a great CASA director.
Okay, so, great.
So I was just, I had submitted a...
I didn't mean to cut you off, just, I just didn't know she was here, why?
Yeah. I submitted a letter with my budget, kind of breaking it down on what I'm asking the county to match, and then what comes from my matching and capacity grants. I didn't know if you guys had any questions about that. And then I was just, I am asking to hire an independent contractor for training coordinator. She would be in charge of doing all of our trainings for both counties. And it would be an independent contractor, just like myself, so no benefits. And that's 30 hours of training each session, and we try and do a training each quarter. So, and she would also carry a caseload of two, three, and five cases, depending on the need. So...
This is another case, or just like the public defender board situation, where two counties are working together to share resources and to hopefully improve the services. So I'm working with Vermaine in this project here, and, and very important services. We all would agree that the CASA program is a very important advocate for children in these difficult situations.
And actually, that was kind of my inspiration. And it's worked great to have a full-time CASA director, because you may recall in the past, we just were on such a shoestring budget, just by ourselves, we were really not able to keep a CASA director there. I mean, they just won't pay enough, and sometimes really nothing, just their mileage. So it's nice to have somebody that you can count on, day in and day out, to be there. So I appreciate you guys funding it.
I could have pens and some brochures, you know, if you guys would like them, just to kind of give a more better idea of what, you know, the brochures are more of what we, you know, advocate for and all that. And then just some pens, and this is some things, you know, we pass out in the community. If you want to take some, pass them down. You know, we did Little Italy Festival and passed out a bunch of frisbees. We do a lot of like, you know, things like that, just to kind of help put the word out to recruit more and more volunteers to advocate for these children.
Your backpack program, I mean, down at Park is wildly popular, isn't it, huh?
Yes. We did, we actually ran out of backpacks and ended up just filling up bags with supplies. We did over 200 backpacks. We had five hairdressers, I think it was. They did 15 haircuts each, like, per hairdresser, which was a lot for, for them. And it, yeah, you couldn't do that without the Children's Bureau. We've linked with them, and they donated all the supplies and all the backpacks. So we also do a Christmas kind of thing where we get donations and, you know, we'll purchase some gifts for children who might not have enough. And it's not just children that we advocate for, it's for the community as well. So...
Okay, thank you very much.
Any else?
No, I don't think so.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Howard. Stay.
Yeah.
Thanks for coming.
Stane, did you want to say anything?
I do have something to bring up. Apologize for not making the scheduled meeting last week, but I have some important work to take care of. I'm reaching out to the council to grant my clerical position, full-time, part-time status, and increasing her wages to $12.50 an hour. Let me give you a rundown on some of her responsibilities. She answers the phone several times a day. A lot of those calls are from veterans requesting transportation for medical appointments. She has to schedule these appointments. She has to phone, contact the drivers, and then return that phone call to the veteran and let him know that we're able to meet that appointment. Then she has to complete the proper paperwork for the driver to turn in to the VA. She completes the end of the month transportation, transportation reports that are forwarded to the VA in Indianapolis. She does invest... She does investigative work for me, and I'm wanting to start updating the Park County cemetery records with the deaths of veterans, and I'd like to add this responsibility to her. And I just recently found out that the person that is responsible for organizing military funerals is moving out of town. So guess who's going to get that responsibility? Me. And I would probably pass, delegate this onto her duties. As you can see, this position has several responsibilities. A lot of counties refer this position as administrative assistant. It's important to the Veterans Office to have this help in there. It's hard to do claims for veterans and answer the phone, schedule transportation, transportation trips, and other duties. So I would appreciate you guys' action on this.
Okay, any questions, Stan?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, yep. Mary Allen, did you want to say anything?
I'm the same way. I pay part-time for two days every week. It comes out of my perpetuation fund, so it doesn't come out of your budget or anything. And I would like to see her get twelve fifty an hour, as a full-time, part-time, working for him, three days, two for me.
Well, you're breaking the way we understand the IRS laws by having the same individual work, because that makes her full-time, so you cannot do that. That makes her full-time, she works for the county, that causes her, then she's eligible for benefits when you do that.
So, can't we do that?
No.
No, we're not going to start paying health insurance and have a full-time person down there. That costs way too much money to do that.
I'm paying her salary, so, I mean, to me, that's.
We're not going to do that. That's got to stop now, because you're breaking the law.
Decide who gets twelve fifty an hour, and who gets, I mean, like, who gets twelve fifty an hour?
Now, we're talking two different things now, so you've changed the deal. I'm telling you that you can't have one person work the full amount of hours, because that creates a full-time position, that's what you're doing.
Right.
That's what I just said, I wasn't talking about the twelve fifty and all of that business, that was what I was talking about.
Okay. But there are, I mean, you know, there are people that get paid, so it's okay for her to get paid the way she is now, from me and from him.
Coast Guard.
We all work for the county, the county's the one that's paying her, so she's, you're making her full-time by doing that.
It's the hours that's the problem.
It's the hours.
Not the pay.
Not the pay, it has nothing to do with the pay.
So she could work, she works twenty-one hours for him, she could work one day for me.
Whatever that, that, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Less than twenty-eight.
Yeah, it's less than twenty, is it twenty-eight?
Less than twenty-nine.
Twenty-one and seven would be twenty-eight, and then.
But that would not make her full-time.
Right.
But by her working thirty-five.
Yes.
Is making her full-time, that's my point, and we can't do that. Or violate, you're breaking the IRS laws by doing that now. You cannot, you have to stop doing that, because you're breaking the law. Because you're making her full-time with not paying her benefits.
And she says she doesn't need the insurance.
Well, you know, it's out of our, you know.
Our rest doesn't care.
We have to follow the law, because we can't pick and choose as much as we maybe would like. Sorry, but I just, we can't break the law, I mean, we'll be written up and.
So I can call, I can.
But you get her for one day, I mean, as long as it's under that threshold, well, that's fine. We just can't go with the full-time, if you're making her full-time.
Or even a day, I mean, she works thirty-four hour, I mean, she works thirty-four hours, she's not full-time.
No, it's, the threshold's not under thirty-five, it's.
What is the threshold, I mean?
I think it's twenty-nine, isn't it?
I think.
Isn't that what the county policy is?
It's whatever the policy says.
Twenty-nine, twenty-nine hours.
Twenty-nine hours. So you guys can work her twenty-nine hours in any combination you want to, but it can't be over twenty-nine, if that's what the policy says, that's what they.
Or is it, it can't be twenty-nine for? That's what I don't know, I don't know. I think it's anything over twenty-nine. I think, exactly, you think it's over twenty-nine, you're full-time, so twenty-nine, I think's okay, but we need to check, because I can't swear. Because it may be twenty-nine is full-time. Yeah.
I think, I can't remember if any of our regular part-time individuals that exist at this point are twenty-nine and under.
Yes, that's what I think it is, too.
I know that. Now, I can't remember if it's twenty-eight and under, or twenty-nine and under, but generally, how, how entities have done this, has been twenty-nine is the top end. You don't get to thirty.
I really think thirty's the magic number for.
Oh, I think you're right, but everybody always backs off of that, an hour or so, to keep it under.
That's what I mean, I think thirty's the limit, so twenty-nine, you can work, I think.
Well, thirty was the number with Obama here, when that all happened.
Yes.
That was the number there, so everybody did twenty-nine and under.
Yes.
So you can work her any combination of that, you know, that's, I mean, that's between, I guess, you guys, but, but we can't do that, I mean, I'm sorry, I mean, I pulled the young, whoever, I didn't even know who it is. I pulled up the person for wanting to work the hours, and I wish, but we can't make that.
Well, he needs her work.
Work, so. Well, you know, if he works her twenty-one, there's still, basically, some time there. But we have to follow the law, sorry, because it's just, I know it's a bummer, but it's just the way it is. Okay, anything else then on that? Jim?
Just a few things, we did, once again, to get a dependence, that we approved the request from PCI to use the square for the festival, the festival is a definite go. We intend to make the best use of our knowledge if we can, as far as hand sanitizers being available in the tent area and on the square. We'll encourage spacing, but of course, it won't be enforceable, I think that's not even mandated now. We do hope to have a, a testing vaccine site available on the square during the ten days of the festival. We just had a, a strike team from the state come for a vaccine and testing yesterday and the day before, they operated from twelve to eight. The first day, they went through about a hundred, as of five o'clock, I was there at five o'clock, and they had gone through about a hundred people, I think seventy tests and thirty vaccines, if I got the number right, but I don't know what they did the last three hours, and I don't know what they did yesterday, but I would guess probably three hundred people or so went through, whether it was all vaccination, I mean, one vaccinations or not, I'm not sure. So that will be available. I have not yet scheduled a meeting of the group, we've put together a working group to figure out how to spend the ARP money, I know the council got some requests for that money, which I think are certainly viable and doable. But the unfortunate part of that, and I think it is an unfortunate part, is it's the commission of obligation to decide where that money is going to be spent. So we're going to start meeting, and I've asked Dr. Gambi.
Well, remind you, it has to be appropriated through the council, too.
I don't, I don't know about that, because I think.
It doesn't say it in there.
So, and that struggle may come, if we have a disagreement on where it's going to be spent, we may have a disagreement where it won't be spent. You want to spend it someplace, and we can say, no, we're not going to spend it there.
And you may want something we may not appropriate.
Absolutely.
So I suggest we work together, right?
Absolutely, that's why, that's why I bet you guys don't. But it is our responsibility to make those decisions, and we will, and we're going to seek all the information we can. We've included the three of you, and we've included Cindy to meet with us as well, trying to reach out in all directions if we can, so we can at least get some kind of direction of how we want to go, and then we'll have to cut that down to some finite, finite things of what we're going to spend it on. So that will be coming up, I hope to do, have done that by the end of September, I don't see that happening now with festival coming upon us, so it'll probably have to be after festival. We had passed, let's see, well, we had a sprinkler system, had repaired that when the state worked on the sidewalks and the corners up there. They trashed one of the sprinkler heads, they didn't tell us about that, they just put the broken head on, on a hunk of concrete over there, and Don found it, and so we've had that repaired, so that's good to go. I've been meeting with other insurance companies for about a year since we got our renewal last year, I've been meeting a couple purposes, one, to evaluate our plan, and to see what we have, what we need, what might be excess, but I've met with other companies, we have, probably have two other options when it comes time for renewal. I will meet with them again this month, but we meet with Apex Friday to look at our renewal, I've asked for them to provide for us the administrative fees. They don't really do the claims, I mean, they won't know the claims, so they get September numbers in, but we should be able to have a good idea about the admin fees. And really, that's all we pay, is the admin fees to them, other than that, we just pay our claims, so that's how that works, by being self-insured. So I'm going to be meeting with the other consultants, we'll reevaluate our position as being self-funded, so far, it's working pretty good. At the moment, we're about three hundred thousand below our budget on, what we had budgeted for the year, we're about three hundred thousand below that number right now, so plan's working well. We are looking to make a pharmacy change, perhaps, I'm not sure why we, this wasn't proposed to us before by our, by our people, but it's something new, so we'll look at that as well. That is a possibility, if we can get the same results with a different pharmacy change at a lower cost, we'll consider that as well. I think that's all I got.
Could, could you talk a little bit about what Core Facilities is doing as far as the four projects?
Oh, I got that, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't scroll up far enough, yes, we just signed the contract, as we all discussed, just so everybody knew, we had an information gathering meeting with whatever council members were available, and a couple commissioners were available, it was not a meeting, of course, that required any, any attendance, because it was not a, a meeting, any decision was going to be made, that was just information gathering. And so we, we kind of reached a consensus of what we thought was a good plan, presented that to the commissioners, and so we signed the contract with them. The four areas mainly that he's looking at taking care of, one is a fire, an incendiary system, which we all felt was really important, because our system is antiquated. If we had a fire in the courthouse, we would probably not even be able to know about it or to respond to it in time to save the courthouse. So there are other things that have to do with the jail and other, other locations as well, so we signed that, voted, signed that contract, and I notified Scheckley. So he's going to begin now on those four areas that we thought were concerns. He will begin immediately on, on the fire incendiary system, so we should be hearing something from him pretty quickly, so it is a go, and we're on the move.
Okay, good deal.
Got any questions to meet, otherwise?
Any questions?
Go cook candy.
Are we not making, are you cooking candy? A sample would have been nice. Maybe next, but we made the next one, so.
Yeah, we'll see.
Uh, we'll see. Justin?
Seventy-one in jail right now, eleven of those are DOC. I worked my paper, I think, at the jail, but I think we're about a hundred and ten thousand's what we've built out so far for the year, so they'll base that next year off of where we're at. Eleven thousand, forty-five, seventy-seven's what we've collected from our other fees so far. Our jail fence project, which was a grant that Chris O'Brien applied for, I think it's a supply issue, they can't get started on it until February. And we had, there's two twenty-twenty-one Tahos, they were both just built, but you're waiting on ships, so I don't know how long that'll take, but.
Oh, my God, he said, wait a minute.
Did you ever find out, did the DOC ever submit to you what amount of money they were sending back for, you know, normally it was July, August number, did you ever get that from them?
No.
I mean, we got the misdemeanor.
That's all I've got. Katie?
Everything's going great?
Cool, what I care. Cindy? Something? Okay.
Do you have your EMS report in your package? New public, yes. The auditor advises the minutes will be ready in October. Additional appropriations, we have two, both from the MVA restricted fund, the big one for by two minutes is the total of the community crossings grant for, for this year's projects, that has the need to be appropriated, of course. The second one for equipment is the additional cost for the greater leases. That, as you all know, changed in July, August, over the prior contract.
Okay, those are what you have before you.
We can motion accept the additional appropriations.
Second.
Most have been made in second to accept the additional, through the additional appropriations, all in favor?
Aye. Those are baked into the twenty-two budget, so.
Transfers.
Well, two of those for the assessors, she can talk, Tom.
There you go.
Manatron, Thompson, Reuters, Ammentum Technologies, whatever they're called now, when I made my budget, I used the previous year's numbers, and it was sixteen thousand and some change, it came in about thousand to fourteen hundred higher when I got the bill this year. So that's why I've got a little bit of lag, I've got enough in other funds to transfer to cover. The contract I need to cover is for AS2, for our personal property system, is two thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars a year, which is nominal. I mean, for that kind of software and all the work they do submitting things to the state for us, so I just was going to transfer, I've got three transfers, one's out, one's in category, so you didn't have to do that, but I'm moving money on the in, in category from dues to service contracts, and then the two that you need to take a look at is from postage to service contracts, and office supplies to service contracts, just so I can pay that contract, please and thank you.
The third one for Park Interact, nineteen dollars and ninety-six cents from training and travel and operating supplies, fund twelve nineteen. I don't know the backstory on that, but it's twenty dollars.
He's totally had money in this, in that supply line, and he's already got an excess, and nineteen dollars that he wants paid.
Twenty dollars of transfers.
Okay. Those are the transfers before you.
Move approval.
Most have been made in second to prove the transfers, all in favor?
Aye.
Pay the jury. Most have been made in second, pay the jury, all in favor?
Aye.
Any developments?
Did not meet.
Planning and zoning?
Did not meet.
Courthouse security did not meet.
Did not meet.
Did not meet. Good deal, good deal. Okay, Roy, did you want to make any comments on the?
Uh, yeah, I will.
On this, I think we passed that out.
To the members.
They may not have got it, I don't know if they got it on that side.
Amber, did you get one of those?
Uh, no.
All right, sorry, I thought I gave you one.
That's okay.
This is a draft at this point, for.
Yeah, that's the thing, this is a draft, so it's not fine.
There's already one minor change that's been made to this in the last fund, on the ARC fund, from eighty-eight to ninety. But this is, this is the draft of where we stand with the budget at this point. The proposed adopted budgets, tax levy and the rate, handwritten up to the side is what I expect the actual rates to be approved at. And as you well know, we overadvertise, we overadopt the general fund, we overadopt debt service, and we overadopt the cumulative funds, because they will take them down to where statute says they have to be. Reassessment is where it should come in exactly at that, health should come exactly at that, Park Interact should come exactly at those numbers for the levies. Those tax rates should be identical to that, because the, the CNAB is entered into the system. So from that, the expectation that I have right now in, in the draft, and what I'm seeing at this point, is point four six two three cents per hundred dollars assessed valuation, where this current year's tax bills were calculated at point four six zero zero, so it's nearly flat. The, the budget at this point, all in, is about almost nineteen million, almost nineteen million. Including the tip funds, and including ARC, and including everything that's in there. Are there any questions from any of you about what you have in front of you? I just wanted you to see where things stand right now, we won't adopt today, of course, we adopt in October. There's still time to make any adjustments, anything that you heard today has been put in as requested, Public Defender CASA will put in as requested. Most of you do have, you know, a good hold on me, so, that's where things stand right now. The salary ordinance is mostly prepared, the notations to make adjustments to, now that we had some answers. some answers to a few other questions. Probably will not adopt that until November or December, dragging my feet on that a little bit. Last year, we got to readopt it again, because of my mistake, so. I prefer to, it does not have to be adopted with the budget, we have done it that way in the past, but it does not, it just has to be adopted before the end of the year.
Okay.
One motion to adjourn.
Second. Thanks.